All right. Yeah, okay, we might have lost a few participants here. Good Kate is coming back.
Everybody's now coming back.
Okay Karen is not. Back but all right and you and if I'm not mistaken Alex daily stepped down. Whether we were going to have a look at the CDSD demographic report or do the minutes first.
Up to you guys, if you want to stick around, you can or.
What is it?
Our minutes will be fast, I'll tell you that. They're very short.
I move we approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Thanks Ellie. Okay, all in favor of accepting the minutes? Say I or raise real or virtual hand.
Aye.
Aye.
I can abstain unless because I wasn't there unless we need me.
You have four. We have four, so I think we're good. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so Kate abstains. All right, thank you. And we're done with minutes. So. Emily, I only had a little bit of time to skim through the CDSD report. Do you want to capture some highlights for us? Or how do you want us to or do you want us to go away and read it and come back and discuss in the future?
Melinda summarized it for us in a memo.
Oh, I missed that.
The memo or the memo. Yeah, I mean, I can just briefly kind of go over it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so so you requested and you provided you with the demographic study that was recently done by the Champlain Valley School District. I think the the paper. Had some coverage of that. It was unfortunately maybe a little misleading, but. Anyway. So just to kind of go over the the main takeaways. So the population is is increasing in a rate of about, you know, fifteen to sixteen percent. Sort of in line with the previous decade. It's actually the growth rates decreased a little bit. However, the percentage of the population has proportionally less school age children than in the past. So. The 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 population of school age children. Yes, is growing, but not as fast as you would think by just looking at the growth of population in Williston. And you know, we have a gray population have. A, you know, large percentage of the population in the age group from fifty five and up. So that partially explains. Why the the school age population is not increasing at the same rate as the overall population. And so the report did include kind of a baseline enrollment projection doesn't take into account new housing. In the town and it also includes a projection that that does take. The anticipated housing growth into consideration. And and basically like the the increase in enrollment in the entire in the in the Williston. Schools is about. Hundred and fifty two over the next decade. Using the projections adjusted for the new housing. And you know, the the it gets a little bit. To go into it in great detail how they arrived at these projections, I'm not gonna I'm not gonna go into it. But they, you know, they. They take into consideration a lot of different factors. Including the length of, you know, occupancy of any different any even housing unit. Having an impact on. How many school children particular house will. Will. I don't know, will will make up. And, you know, the demand for school spaces, that's what I'm trying to say. Multi-family dwellings generally generate less demand for school spaces than single. Single detached. Dwellings. And so, you know, now we're the town is producing many more multi-unit housing units than than single detached units. So that will produce less of demand on schools. So anyway, that's kind of that's kind of it. It's a, you know, the report said that you we can expect. An increase in school population over the next decade. That does assume that all of the proposed housing. The proposed and approved housing gets built over the next ten years, which. You know. Likely it, you know, likely it will take longer to build out or. You know, I guess it's possible that all get built out in the next ten years, but unlikely. And that lastly, the the town does charge an impact fee for schools. That's. Charged very specifically for to pay for expansions directly related to increasing capacity. To serve new students can't be used for just maintenance or regular operations. So. So anyway. There was the last school impact fee analysis was completed in twenty twelve. I mean, it did sort of hint that we might be looking at at that time, the the. The trend was declining enrollments or or stable or declining enrollments and. You know, did the report did hint that we might be looking at that trend to reverse. You know, a decade or so into the future, but that. You know, the the facilities that are existing would probably be okay until at least twenty twenty two. So here we are. And, you know, showing a possible reverse of the declining trend. And a possible increase in the in the student population. So it's not like, you know, this is kind of has been expected and. You know, the response is really. You know, the school can look at can decide whether it needs to construct new facilities. Those facilities could be paid for by bonds. And the towns would need to decide how to fund those bonds, how to pay for those bonds and. One mechanism is through the school impact fees. And and one last note that with the Allenbrook School. If there were the history of the Allenbrook. Scroll down a little little bit more. There were some modular classrooms that were built. And then the enrollment started declining and those modular classrooms were were dismantled. So it sort of went back and forth. Anyway, just those are some observations and I'm happy to try to to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Chapin, and then we'll hear from Shayla.
Hey, yeah. To me, it was a whole lot of detail that we didn't need, but it was some of it was interesting. And if you scroll back up to the summary of how many school kids are produced per unit of housing, it's the last section right. There. The point five seven per single family home is four times what we get per town home or condominium. And almost six times what we get per apartment. And so I just wanted to say, looking at the detail of those numbers, it's so much driven by single family homes. And the other, I'm really glad that you talked about impact fees, but the other things that are. Relevant that were not part of this study is that the school district has been making a facility. Outlook plan for Allenbrook School, and we should really have know what they're doing there. I think that they, although that school was built on the premise that you could do a reflection of the buildings that are on one side of the core. Facilities on the other side of it, they school administrators feel they would need to expand those core facilities. Which is, you know, dining offices, you know, cafeteria offices and gym and library. But I also. The total number of students in the next ten years expected for Williston Schools is not very large and. We just underwent renovation of the Williston Central School Facility where a third of the facility was unavailable. At any given time over a period of two years, I think it was do those renovations. And so I think there's some elasticity in Williston Central School, and this is just me speaking. And so I just, I think. Oh, and finally, that any if there is an increase in building. It will be done at the district level and the bonding will be at the district level. So people, individual residents concerns their taxes are affected. Is there's a whole lot of things in between their taxes and additional housing. Thanks.
Go ahead, Shayla.
Yeah, I mean, I was sort of going to echo what what Chaimer just said, which is that I I this doesn't feel. Like a radical departure to sort of some of the planning that I know has gone on and the fact that now that we're unified school district. You cannot like the students can can also move between elementary schools. So it is it is possible then if like Charlotte had fewer students that some students from Williston could go to a different school if they chose. So I just. It it seems like not a number of students that is. That would mean that we would need to dramatically change the town plan, at least, you know, from my perspective.
Yeah, agreed. I I found this helpful to read, although I didn't finish reading it because I was very fascinated by the details, but. I my sense is and the reason I think the planning commission needs to pay attention to this, obviously, you know, we make plans that that can impact schools. And we should be aware of this. But at another level, it's also become kind of a convenient. Pushback against some of the plans that we've been discussing, thanks, you know, including for Taft Corners. And I I feel like in in terms of public relations and communicating. It might be really helpful if we had some kind of. Little infographic of some sort that would convey these data in a really concise way. That demonstrates like that this is not something to be alarmed about. That these projections do account for the housing that is. That is in the in the existing plans. And that the impacts are are not severe. And, you know, my concern is that it becomes a very. It's an easy rallying cry for people and they jump on board. You know, and it's a legitimate concern. Yes, our town is growing. How will how will our schools react? But I think this identifies the fact that, you know, there are, you know, as Chapin says, there are ways to absorb small increases and the projections are not huge. So anyway, so there's that's kind of my my take on things. Chapin, did you want to add something? You look like you're in transit.
Yes, sorry, I'm moving around here, but I just wanted to say if you scroll to the very bottom of that document, that's where the numbers are that we could. Publish, which is the projected increase. It's all the way at the end.
And maybe even some of those graphics that they had.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So right there. You can see for twenty thirty one to twenty thirty two.
Can you scroll down a little bit more? Whoever's in charge of the screen. Thank you.
There we go. That today we're at one thousand one hundred and thirty eight students and they're saying ten years from now, we're going to be it. I can't see it because of. One thousand two hundred and something.
Right. Okay, so so this is really helpful. I I just, you know, I I think it is a valid concern, but I feel like the data have shown us that. In fact, we. The 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 housing growth that has been proposed is, you know, capable of being absorbed.
It's ten students a year for the next ten years.
Right. Okay, so that was actually really helpful. Does anybody else have comments or or questions about this?
A comment. We were just talking about the school impact fee at the end of the hack meeting and. I think if my only comment is when talking to the public about that term school impact fee, I think. There is a lot of confusion for me on what that means and what that actually is funding. And as I just like a resident, I might have the belief that that's for some future like slush fund of money that could be used for future renovations. That's what it. It tells me just in the name, but that's a misunderstanding, you know, of what that fee is for. So I think just either clarifying that if you're talking about it with the public or. I mean, you know, taking that out of the primary conversation and more focusing on the numbers, I think is helpful.
Emily, what is our situation with the school impact fee? Are are we are we even charging one right now?
We are charging an impact fee right now. It goes towards the bond for Champlain Valley High School expansion. So an impact fee as Pac and I figured out can only go towards an existing known improvement. So you're going to build an expansion. You bonded for it, you know, your approximate cost, you collect impact fees, it goes towards that project. An impact fee, as Chelsea clarified, it can't be a slush fund. Oh, we might need a school addition in the future. Let's charge all new development a fee and hang on to this money. That money can only go towards. A specific project. It's the same for transportation impact fee can only go towards a specific project. If it's not used within a certain number of years, it has to get returned. And it has to be attributed to the new growth. So if the school wanted to build. You know, a whole new programmatic wing, maybe a new music department. They can't charge that all to the new development. They would have to proportionally say. X amount of this comes from the new demand and X amount comes from the existing demand. So an impact fee analysis will need to be done. So and Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, the process would be if the school district proposed. An expansion or renovation to expand capacity. It would be a bond vote to the participating municipalities. And then Williston could decide how it would want to fund its portion of that bond. And one option could be updating the impact fee study and charging new development its fair share.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
That's really helpful. Yeah, and I I think, you know, this just reminds me again, too, that having. Having clarity on these things is really important when we when we go into, you know, public hearings and. Just being prepared, I guess, and and being conscious of how we communicate to the public. It, you know, might not be a bad idea to, given that this has had a little traction in the local paper and so forth. You know, just keep it on the radar screen. Maybe at some point a planner's corner. Did you already address this in planner's corner, Emily?
Yeah, we we did a planner's corner. I want to say it was like maybe a couple of years ago, we we addressed this very issue of like. How school enrollment relates to population and housing. Trying to look it up, but I can't remember which exactly.
Yeah, I thought I remembered it.
Yeah.
Being addressed.
I feel like it explained it. You know, in a fairly simple way.
Yeah.
Like, I don't think it it goes into impact fees at all, but it does talk about.
Right.
Just the relationship of population growth to school enrollment. And how it's changed over time.
Okay. Great. All right, thank you all for that. If there are no more questions on this, and I somehow lost my. I can't see anybody anymore anymore, so I have to try to get my gallery back, but there we go. Any other questions? On this or comments? All right. Let's move on to, we're a little behind time, but I think we that we have just a couple of quick items to take care of. The first is, folks were on the hack, if you're if you're still hanging out. You know, if I were you, I would go home.
Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you for coming and thank you for all your work on the amazing village plan. Okay, so PC members, we we have our annual nominations and and elections now. Unfortunately, we're missing Jill and Alex. But we still have a quorum, so like to, I guess, begin with. Solucing nominations for. The FY twenty three, we'll start with the chair, I guess. And see if anybody would like to nominate someone or self nominate.
I'll nominate you, Megan, if you'd like to keep.
Okay. I accept your nomination.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Kate and Chapin.
And I also say that I believe that it's really wise to have officers stay in place for two years minimum for some continuity, but not forever.
Yes, right.
I hope you'll do another term. I also wanted to comment that I would like to get out of being the vice chair because I'd like. Someone to be able to be vice chair who will in the future be chair, and that's not me.
Yeah, well, we we certainly appreciate your your excellent leadership, Chapin, and thank you for that. So knowing that that Chapin was interested in stepping down from the vice chair position, I talked to emailed. The three next most senior people, which was Kate, Jill and Shayla. Ellie and Alex, I did not contact you because I felt like you're still pretty new on the commission and it would be a lot to to bite off. So and I realize Alex isn't here, but. And the overwhelming consensus was that Jill and Shayla both wholeheartedly. Preferred that Kate become the vice chair. So thank you for your honesty. I wanted there to be some level of kind of conversation and and consideration, a little bit of time for people to mull it over rather than. Just at the, you know, eight forty nine on the Tuesday, suddenly being confronted with this idea of being vice chair, so.
I'll nominate Kate to be vice chair.
Okay. And I will second that. And Kate, will you accept our our motion?
I will, thank you.
Okay, our nomination, I should say. Okay, so let's go ahead and vote for a formal vote. Are there any, I should ask if there are any other nominees for either of the positions, but I suspect given our small numbers right now and previous conversations.
We can probably vote on the slate.
Yes, good point. Yes, okay, so all those in favor of having me as another year of chair and Kate as vice chair, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay, a voice vote from Shayla, thank you, oh, and a virtual hand. Okay, so unanimous among our our members who are present, thank you very much. And I appreciate your confidence. I hope that the past year has. Not been too terrible. But I look forward to to one more year and and that will be it. And only made possible because I'm on sabbatical this fall. I it's just a little bit too much for me to handle and when I'm in my full teaching capacity, so. Thank you for and I really want to shout out, thank you, but Kate, for being willing to take this on and. And Kate, I would love to set up a quick chat at some point, just so we can, you know, coordinate a little bit. All right.
And thank you. I thank you to Chapin for both having been the chair and stepping down from that and then being the vice chair for this heavy lift year. And then also. Stepping down from that with foresight. I do appreciate that.
Yes, definitely.
Thanks, and I'm assuming this takes place July one.
Yeah, yeah. So this is our last meeting under the. Current. Leadership. Okay, so annual report, Emily, do you want to give us a little? Introduction to this?
Yeah, the annual report is based on fiscal year, so July one of twenty twenty one to June thirtieth of this year. We need two volunteers to help write the annual report. And it has to be limited to which one page to fit in the annual report document.
It's all about form-based code this year.
I am pretty much all about. Terrible at that last year, but I will definitely edit it if that is helpful.
Thank you, Shayla. That is super helpful. I remember from previous times that we had a, I know that there's last years to go off, but then there's also. You folks, I think, provided some basic. Information that that went into it.
How many meetings and all that?
Yeah, we can provide the basic information. And they kind of link the highlight agenda items, but Melinda's right, it really is, you know, going to be about. The form-based code, the fiscal year started in July when we were going over the vision plan. Working through the code itself, getting through a public hearing to where we are today, kicking off village bylaw.
We can look for pictures for it too. Or if any of you have pictures.
That's right, we like pictures, safe. That's right, we like pictures because they they take up space. Chapin, were you going to say something? Yeah.
I can, in all my spare time, not being vice chair, I could volunteer to help with writing. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that other groups have not stuck to the fiscal year. They've often included things that go into the fall. And for people reading the town report that comes out in late January or February for the March meeting, it's actually helpful to have a little bit of information that spills over into the new year. So I I hope we can just have a little bit of poetic license about that. It winds up sounding like such old information if you end on June thirtieth with something that people read in March the next year. Thanks.
Yeah, okay, I hadn't realized that about other other boards. Okay, so we
do that, you know, keep a placeholder space to say one or two sentences and we submit it in December, so we could probably give a good update on where form-based code is at, where Village Bylaw is at, and just kind of leave those placeholders for, you know, the up-to-the-minute update.
Yeah, because it'll be hopefully some substantial new information, right? Yeah. Okay, that's great. I am happy to to help write this as well. And so maybe if Chapin and I take a first stab at it with the the basic information that we're given and then we'll hand it over to Shayla for a quick edit. Does that sound reasonable?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right. Any other comments on the annual report? Right, great. All right, I think that is the end of our agenda, which is fantastic, because we're two minutes before nine, reclaiming our time as Maxine Waters says. From 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 very long select board meetings. Last go, last couple of meetings, so. Thank you all for your service and for being here tonight and happy summer. First day of summer and happy vacation, Chapin. I can't believe you zoomed in on your vacation, but thank you for doing so. All right, bye, everybody.
Good night.